Good evening. Welcome to the March 18, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to remind you, if you can, please make sure your cellphones are either off or on silent. And if you would, please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations on the applications requesting rezoning or conditionally used permit will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Monday, April 13, 2015 County Council meeting. Please note that the Planning and Zoning Commission's vote this evening on all the applications for temporary fireworks stands and preliminary plats is final. Only recommendations for denial on these applications will be heard before the County Council. I see we have a quorum. Will someone move that we open the meeting?
So moved.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, the year 2025 master plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just for a roadmap for the evening, I will read each application into the record. We will then ask staff for their analysis and recommendation on that application. The applicant, if they're here and wish to do so, may then come forward and explain the application and answer any questions that the commission may have of them. After the applicant, we then open it up to the public portion of the meeting, where anybody who wishes to speak on that particular item may be allowed to do so. Please note that individuals will be limited to three minutes each, and then if you are speaking as a group, i.e., you have a petition with you, you will get five minutes, and the chair does reserve the right to speed things along if you start saying things that have been repeated, been repeated a couple of times already, just to keep the meeting moving. After the public portion of the hearing is over, the applicant will then be allowed to come forward and answer any of the issues brought up by the public and then answer any further questions by the commission. And again, after the public here, after that's done, we will vote on each item, and as I said before, our recommendations will then go to the County Council for their final determination on the matter, and that will start on Monday, April 13, 2015. The first application this evening is rezoning request RZ-15-000001, Highway P Investments LLC applicant, Schaefer Holdings LLC and the Swindle Family Trust care of Susan Schaefer, owner. The application requests a zoning change from R1A, single-family residential, one-acre minimum lot size, to R1B, single-family residential, 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. The property is located on the east side of Castle Lake Court and Windcastle Place and the west terminus of Fairdale Lane. The property is approximately 35.01 acres and is located within Council District VII. Staff?
Thank you. Okay. Adjacent zonings include R1A to the north and to the east. To the south is R1A and R1B, and to the west is R1B, single-family residential zoning. Land uses in the area include single-family residential on all sides, and the 2025 land use plan indicates properties to be developed with low-density residential. In reviewing the application, staff looked at the area zoning as well as area developments. The property to the west, as stated, in Windcastle Platteau, is zoned R1B, single-family residential. The lots on Fairdale Lane, those lots were recorded prior to 1973. Even though they're zoned R1A, the lots are predominantly 20,000 square feet in size, with the largest lot being 1.38 acres. Staff finds that the zoning change, the 20,000 square foot minimum lot size, is in keeping with zonings in the area and area lot sizes, so we are recommending approval. There are letters that we received. We received a letter of concern from William and Ivy Stewart, concerns regarding preliminary plat, lot sizes, and a copy of the preliminary plat, written protest by Anthony J. Bernie Trust, written protest by James Maurer, written protest by Greason-Haber Living Trust, written protest by Daniel M. Madonna Link, a written protest by John and Mary Jensen. Any questions, staff? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yeah, my name is Dale Bax. I'm with Bax Engineering at 221 Point West Boulevard, St. Charles, Missouri, 63301.
Go ahead.
Good evening. We're here to speak about and present a rezoning for attractive ground. Actually, there's two tracts of ground. One is 35.01 acres owned by Schaefer Holding. The other is 1.76 acres owned by Swindle Family Trust, compiling a total of 36.77 acres for this particular development. As stated before, we are surrounded by R1A zoning and R1B zoning. Access will be through Windcastle Place and Fairdale Lane. With this development here, we're planning on a single-family residential subdivision that models Windcastle as it stands today, and we're asking for a rezoning. I know we have a lot of people here with a lot of questions, so what I'd like to do is just hear the questions that they have, and we can answer those questions as we go. We will be presenting a preliminary plan and construction plans and record plats to follow this as well. So I'd like to entertain any questions that staff might have at this time.
Any questions for the applicant?
Can you show us where the access is going to be?
Yes. Access, well, to follow this, this is right here, will be Windcastle Place Drive. It's going to go through the outlot B. Outlot B was platted with the plat two as future access into the development. Where that arrow is pointing right there, that would be the access strip into the tract of ground. We have an alternative access out Fairdale Lane, which is the northeast side of the site. That primarily will be used just for emergency purposes. We do plan on having private gated community, both on Fairdale Lane and Windcastle Place Drive, and with private streets.
So on Fairdale Drive, you're proposing a gate similar to Whitmore?
Yeah, very similar to Whitmore. Exactly. You know, it can be utilized by the residents, but mainly primarily to be utilized by emergency vehicles, such as fire, police, and ambulance.
And you're going to gate the other side, too?
Yes, sir. It'll be a fully gated community.
Okay. So you're going to maintain the road?
Yes, it's a private. Roads will be built to county standards, full maintenance. I just didn't know how much you really wanted me to get into the development here, being we're here talking about a rezoning, but I'll certainly answer any questions anybody might have.
When are you going to submit the preliminary plats, then?
The preliminary would be submitted this Friday.
Okay.
To the staff.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. What are you proposing on your average lot size? I thought it was greater than...
The average lot size is 28,186 square feet. Our largest lot is 46,635 feet. We do have a couple of small lots. The smallest one is 20,601 square feet. Just the way the lay of the land laid out and the layout of the lots did allow us to gain another 20,000 square foot lot, so therefore, we're going to utilize the ground to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant?
What kind of value will these homes be valued at?
Well, we would like to model the existing Windcastle development. The developer and Sue Schaefer, which was the developer of Windcastle, had been going through during negotiations and purchasing of the property, that we will be following the covenants and restrictions of Windcastle. They have worked that out as far as this purchaser does have to follow the majority, I guess, the covenants and restrictions that have already been imposed on Windcastle. So we really want to model Windcastle. That's our goal here.
So what is the value of a home?
I don't live in Windcastle. I just know that they're probably, on average, I would say 800,000 to $1 million when I drove through there, would be my guess.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. Shall I just leave this board up here for now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
We will now open this up to the public, so anybody and everybody that does wish to speak on this, please feel free to come forward and do so. As a reminder to you, if you do speak, please fill out one of these cards here at the front, just so we have a record of your notes. So we now open this up to the public.
My name is...
Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Frank Toko, and I live at 28 Windcastle Place, and I do not sell pizzas down the street here, so...
Okay, good to know. Thanks.
Some of the concerns that we had were actually just answered with regard to the entrance and exit, or this being a private gated community. But there are several people in the audience from Windcastle that have concerns about the development, obviously, about the type of homes and so on, that will be going in there. Before we get started, I guess I'm a little out of sequence, because it was asked before about the questions about the formal protest. Can someone clarify me, the formal protest, 30% of the applicant, or 30% of the people that received that letter that we all got, if 30% do that, then does that mean that five of the seven council members then have to approve this rezoning? And if so, when are they due?
Council?
And how many people have this letter gone out to?
I can answer part of that, and that's five of the seven. The County Council would have to vote in favor.
Correct.
I cannot answer as to how many people the letter has gone out to. Timeliness of the protest, you'd have to have it before the council prior to their meeting. I mean, I would say at least several days ahead of time.
We know that we have a few here, but certainly wouldn't represent 30%, but I was just curious to know if you knew what that number might be.
Do you have any idea what the...
A map will appear. The properties highlighted in red on the screen are who we sent notifications to.
Okay, it's really not going to tell us how many there is, but let me go on, because I know my time's limited here. We looked at the preliminary plat, or what we thought was the preliminary plat that we gathered in one of the county offices, and we don't really know who the developer is. What's listed on that preliminary plat, and I think what was indicated just a minute ago, was that it was Highway P Investments LLC with an address out of Florida. Do we know who that developer is, and do we know if he's developed other land in St. Charles County, and what his reputation might be? I don't know who Highway... I can't find anything on the Internet about Highway P Investments. Who are the principals and so on? So that's a question I have. Second question I have is, do we know who the builders will be in this development? It seems to me that if the developer is asking for rezoning, they would know who the builders might be, and it might help us become a bit more comfortable with the proposed 800,000 to $1 million price range of these homes, and obviously, you know, to protect our own home values as well in Windcastle. And by the way, I'm representing some of the people here in Windcastle, but certainly not all of Plat 1 and 2, and they're very free to get up and speak their own piece as well. But do we know who the builders are? That's a question. I heard something about the standards and the quality of homes being equal to the current building standards in Plat 1 and 2. I would like to know or see, or will the covenants be made available to see for this new development at some point in the near future, because that would help us understand. It's one thing to say that they'll be the same, or essentially the same, as Windcastle Plat 1 and 2. And obviously, could affect the value of our homes as well. And fourthly, we were questioning whether or not the road access from Fairdale and Windcastle was appropriate. My understanding of what was just said, it's going to be a gated community on both sides, right? So it'll be private. That'll help our concern of more traffic coming in and out of the Windcastle subdivision, and further points to the west terminus off Jacob Station and so on, coming through the Windcastle development. We have a lot of people in our neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods that walk and jog and do all these things, and we already have some issues with blind spots and things of that nature in our subdivision as well. But hopefully, that will be alleviated if this is going to be cut off at both entrance and exit. Why is it more appropriate for it to come through Windcastle than out Fairdale? That's my question. Why couldn't this development go out Fairdale, go in and out Fairdale, and gate the Windcastle community as the emergency exit? It just seems to me to make some sense. You talked about square footage of lots. Maybe I haven't seen the final plat, but the preliminary plat, to me, the lots in Windcastle, we think, the smallest lot in there is about a half an acre, .53. And I think in your package, you have some information that we put together on the actual lot sizes in Plat 1 and 2. I think they're substantially larger than the ones in proposed Plat 3. There are 12 lots, I think, under 24,000 square feet in the proposed Plat 3. That's my assessment, at least at the plat map I looked at. That's a third of the community, and so to build an 800,000 to $1 million home on those lot sizes is going to be, you know, in my opinion, a little bit of a stretch, and it concerns us. That's of concern.
If you could wrap it up. You are significantly...
Yep, I will do so.
Thank you.
I talked about the Fairdale. You know, just as a last point, you know, we've done a lot in our community to help curb the traffic and so on as a community, you know, getting one trash hauler to come in on one particular day, voluntarily, you know, not parking on one side of the street or both sides of the streets when we have gatherings because of emergency vehicle access, all those kinds of things. And if it does happen to come through ours, it's going to make that much more difficult to control. So that's my piece, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Do I fill one of these out?
Yes, please do.
Mr. Chairman, we sent notices to 144 people.
144, thank you.
144.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Go ahead. Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes. My name is Robert Rocco Cottone. I'm at 53 Castle Lake Court, and my lot borders the new plat, and in fact, it is the smallest lot in Plat 2 that borders the new property. And I'm very, very concerned about encroachment up against my lot, because when we built the house, we were told there was going to be a Plat 3 of Windcastle with acre lots, and I think that we're concerned that the smaller-sized lots will bring the houses much closer to our home. And the other issue is that there is a wooded area in the proposed plat that borders my lot, and we're worried that that will be torn down to make room for the homes on the smaller lots. So I feel I have a lot to lose. I'm really perturbed by this, because my property is going to be very close to the new development, and new homes will be butted up close to my lot, when there was a promise that there would be a buffer, you know, prior to our purchase of this lot. And so my wife and I are very concerned about this. We're also concerned about runoff, water runoff, because there is a hill that comes to our property from the plat that is proposed, and we're concerned about how that's going to be managed. How is the water going to run through Plat 2, if it is going to run through Plat 2, and into the retention area, the water retention area on Plat 2? Very concerned about how that water runoff will be handled. So my two main arguments are a promise, a promise that we would have a large lot behind us that would buffer us from encroachment, and also water runoff issues on the lot. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Beverly Ruff, and...
Can you raise your right hand for us?
I do.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
Yes.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Beverly Ruff. And I live at 21 Windcastle. My husband and I live there, and we've been a resident there for 13 years plus. We bought the home in 2000. We developed our home, and I have pictures here of the billboards that advertise secluded lots, custom homes. If this is all opened up, it's not going to be secluded anymore. It's going to be just another subdivision. I am on the board in Windcastle Plat 1, and we have some concerns, as mentioned, of the traffic, and we have a lot of walkers and runners in our subdivision because there is less traffic. We're concerned about the water runoff also. If it's going to be directed into our area, and the pond is, our retention pond is actually Plat 1, and we have a lot of expense and maintenance and time into that pond this year to prevent algae and all that. Would Plat 3 be willing, if their runoff is coming in our direction? I don't even know if our pond can sustain more runoff. There should be some kind of study done before it would be directed into our pond. Several people are concerned about the land disturbance in the area, too, and with the surrounding area of the pond, there's also an outlot that is not on the rezoning, and it sits butts up next to our retention pond area, and it is boarding Lot 51 and also the subject property. It's that little, up there by 51, up there. It wasn't on the rezoning, so we're wondering what's happening there. Is that an area for a retention pond? If another one goes in, will the integrity of our pond be at jeopardy? And we're asking if this all goes through and there's construction in Plat 2, or Plat 3, rather, that the construction equipment be kept out of the view of the Plat 2 owners as much as possible, because if they're trying to resell their home, it's a deterrent, really, to any buyer. In conclusion, I would like to say that adding Plat 3 would create a lot of problems for the current owners of Windcastle Plat 1 and 2, for the residents there and in future residents in Plat 2. We bought and built the homes, thinking that Windcastle would be secluded, and all custom homes. Are the homes in the proposed Plat 3 going to be custom homes? Are there going to be displays? And if this all goes through and it's not to the quality of the Windcastle standards, we're just going to be another development. We won't be the prestige secluded custom home development of St. Charles that we're known to be, and we're very concerned about that and our property values. The homes in there, I would say, if any, are not under 800,000. Ours is well over that, so we're all concerned. And there are several in the area in the plats that are worth more than that, so we're concerned about the $800,000 level. I have pictures of the billboards that were out on 94 that showed this advertisement from Schaefer Homes. If you all would like to have a copy, and I also have a copy of our speaking points, if you would like to have copies of those. And we have a plat that was given to one of our homeowners, showing larger lots in the back. You don't have that, but I have copies for everyone, showing larger lots in the back with no access on Fairdale. So we're just concerned, because a lot of things have changed. The homeowners are upset, because things are not being followed through as they were told. If you would like, I can hand these out to you.
Yep, just want to...
Sure. And I really thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter. It's very important to us, and we're very passionate about all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record?
My name is Landis Meredith, and I live on 4116 Fairdale Lane, and my main concern, since you guys brought it up, I knew it was a zoning, but it's been brought up several times, and I'm sort of outraged with some other comments here. The gating and use of our road. I understand it was supposed to be for Fire Department emergency purposes only? Okay. My biggest fear is, we have at least 20 kids on our street. It was a dead-end, one-way street, a dead-end street, and a lot of them are toddlers, and they naturally like playing in the yard and go out in the road sometimes. So one of my main concerns is, if concrete trucks, carpenters, roofers, you name it, heavy equipment coming down our street, it's going to be dangerous for the kids, and also our road, we fought for years to get that road put in, and the county finally put it in. I realize it's a county road, but the road is starting to deteriorate now. So if all this equipment comes down our road to build their homes, it's going to be a problem, and I speak for a lot of people on our street. So that's one of my main concerns. So I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I promise you. Yes, I do.
All right. Can you state your name and address for our record?
My name is Michael Moreno. I live at 17 Windcastle. I'm not going to say a whole lot that hasn't been covered already, just a couple things I want to bring up. When I bought this house, it was just about 12 years ago, I worked my butt off to get there, 40 years in the business, to get enough money to move into this last house. I did it, and for this gentleman here, building a $500,000 home, you're never going to do it, not on 25,000 square feet. You're not going to build a $500,000 home, and you're definitely not going to build a $1 million home, because I wouldn't be foolish enough to spend a million bucks on a lot that small. Number one. Number two, if everybody knows... Number two, if everybody knows about Whitmore, they've seen the congestion that is constantly on that street getting into a private house, private entrance. If you have that on both sides of Windcastle, you're going to have a zoo in the middle of Windcastle, people trying to get through. It's the same thing that happens out there on Kiska Road when they try to get into Whitmore. You're going to have the same mess on both sides of this thing. What they should do is take people, quit piggybacking on nice subdivisions and building these homes. I have no problem with small homes. Let them go where small homes are. Get them out of my backyard. I bought a home in there. I was promised and told when I spent over $200,000 for my lot, there were going to be two acre lots or lot, an acre and a half. I'm not going to lose a half a million dollars on my house, boss. I'm not going to do it. So somebody needs to stop this nonsense before it happens, not after the fact, but before. That's up to you gentlemen to help us. Just think if this is going to happen in your backyard, what you would do. That's all I ask you to do. I've got grandkids out there too. This gentleman does, and so do I. And I've got a lot of grandkids. And if one of them get hit, we got no problems, he's seen a problem. Thank you very much.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do. I just want to add a couple of-
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
I'm sorry. John Jensen, 12 Windcastle, St. Charles, Missouri.
Thank you.
I just want to add a couple of points that, to follow up on the last two gentlemen is there are no sidewalks in the existing Windcastle plat one and two. So the children and the bikers are in the street. There's no way, so the car's coming down. That's where the people are. They're not on the sidewalks. Also, there's, they just completed Pittman Hill going down to the Katy Trail and added sidewalks there. Very nice job. But a lot of people do go in and out of there now to access that trail. And I just wanted to make those two points. And that would be coming out of the Windcastle side of that to go down the hill to the trail. So there's a lot of people walking dogs and bikes, et cetera, in that area that I wanted to follow up on those points. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Brian Marino. I'm lot owner 66 in Windcastle. You know, I'm, a lot of people in this room have worked really hard to attain what they have. This is, we're not talking about peanuts. We're talking about whole life investments. My dad, who was just up here actually, he was my advisor when I decided to purchase a lot in Windcastle. I bought that because of the relationship he had with Sue Schaefer, the honesty, the trust, all the good things that she showed as a builder. I invested a good majority of the money that I've earned as a young man in the business world. It breaks my heart as I was buying this lot just five years ago, and Sue promised me, these are going to be beautiful lots, plat three, it's going to be great, you know, you're going to be in good company. So I made that investment. And to get this rezoning and understand, not only is my family's home that they've already built, the value going down, but the home that I haven't even built, I can already consider, if this plat goes through, the home that I would build would already be worth less value. And my lot is already worth less if you guys decide to move forward on this. I'm asking for your consideration. I think a lot of people in this room are asking for your consideration, because it does represent a significant investment in a lot of people in this room's lifelong work to get to where they're at. I appreciate your time, and I hope you guys can consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes. Michael Schein, 33 Windcastle Drive. I have two primary concerns around infrastructure-related items. So from the standpoint of the sewer septic system within Windcastle, it's a high-pressure system. And so just an understanding, if we're going to add this many more houses within to that septic system, what could potentially happen? If there's been any kind of evaluation around what that would be, I would like to know the answer to that. Number two, we also have security cameras at the front of the entrance to Windcastle Drive from the standpoint of, you know, just to try to prevent any kind of criminal activity. If we now open up a secondary access, I understand it could be gated. But if now people could come in through a gated system from Faridale, get in access to Windcastle via the gated, do something in Windcastle plat one and two, they could turn around, leave Faridale and go out that way, we'd have no record of it, because they would never come in and out of Windcastle Drive entrance. Those are my two concerns. Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to speak on this one? No? Go ahead. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes. My name is Eric Ensroth. I live at 73 Castle Bluff Drive, very back. I, like some others, like Rocco earlier, I live directly on the backside facing the proposed new settlement. And I guess I have, a lot of good points have been made earlier, and I'll try not to repeat them. But generally speaking, I guess, from my perspective, you know, as a homeowner who's made a significant investment here, it's all about protecting the Windcastle brand and the values that's been established for that. I think everybody, you know, I think that's been hit earlier, but I wanted to just make that. And when I look at the proposal specifically, I would say, why do the lot sizes need to be smaller? Why do the streets need to be narrower? Why do the covenants need to be majority? Why don't they match exactly? What's the plan to protect the tree lines? And how do, you know, as an owner, what should I expect of the new owner slash builder that we haven't been able to really come to grips with what they're about and what kind of quality they represent? Thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, go ahead.
The sewer system was brought up in a previous comment, and we are on a grinder pump system. Duckett Creek has not had anything proposed to them as far as type of sewers that would be over there. There are gravity-fed sewers that border on the Faridale side that they could tie into. But if they tied into our system, it's important that we don't overload our system. It's a delicate system. And that's, that's a very important issue. And also on the security cameras that were brought up, we spent a lot of money on those in plat one. We did it ourselves with help of plat two. And we've been called on several times to give information to the police about happenings in the subdivision.
Is there anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this? Go ahead.
Hi.
Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes. Linda Webenmeyer, and I'm at 60 Castle Bluff Drive. Just a couple of points. One, I have a question about whether there are any regulations or ordinances that are requiring the road that's connected to Windcastle. The second question is whether or not there's been any traffic studies done in regards to the additional traffic that would be coming through either on Pittman or into Windcastle. Another question that I have is if there is a road that's connected, and even if it is gated, are there any plans to help the plat one and plat two maintenance in terms of roads, landscaping, even the camera that was mentioned, or anything like that? So those would be my main questions.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Bonnie Barcakowski, 44 Windcastle Drive. So I just have a few points. One, I hope that you will consider that the decision you make has an enormous ripple effect. I think of the councils. I moved to St. Charles County from North County. I watched decisions that was made from the council, but I always wonder if they went back and checked to see the ripple effect it had on the whole community. I look at the owners that showed up tonight, and it's because they care deeply about the community, not just the homes they live in. So the ripple effect, when you rezone an area, is that it's not going to be reversed. If we don't know the answer on who the developer and who the builder is, suddenly it's been rezoned, and that part's been done. And if a builder comes in, a developer comes in that doesn't do a good job, these people will eventually leave their homes. They'll put them up for sale. I moved from an area that has so much transition now, so many homes sitting vacant, and so many property values that have decreased. So when I look at it, it's not just the homes in Windcastle, it is the people who live there. They care deeply about the community. They've been there for a long, long time. We've been in our home for 11 years. And I'm just asking that you consider that it goes deeper than just rezoning a property. Thanks.
Anybody else? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Todd Goodrich at 43 Windcastle Place.
All right. Go ahead.
And I'm on one of the corners that will be experiencing additional traffic. I get that there's always been a plat three planned for this development. I get that there's going to be additional traffic. There's probably not a lot we're going to do to stop that at this point. To echo one of the gentleman's comments before, why though is new zoning required to go from one acre lots to something substantially less? Secondly, we keep saying that it's a gated community. We have a gate in plat two now that I've never seen closed. I'm a member at Whitmore Country Club who has a back gate that works probably 50% of the time. So to say that we're a gated community and not have fail-safe type things with the gate is not going to be true. And then lastly, I'm cheating here on my iPhone. Lastly, I think what bothers a lot of us most is just the mystery of how this whole thing has come up lately. That if there's a rezoning, we don't know who the people are. If, a little bit about development, if you're doing something that's going to increase the neighbors' values, typically you engage them. You show them how it's going to help them. Where this is a development for the third of three plats for Windcastle, and no one has heard anything about this until we get letters from the county. So obviously, the developer knows that this development is going to diminish property values around it. And they sent in an application, and they're hoping no one would show up tonight. So I would encourage you to strongly consider voting no tonight on this rezoning. Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, twice? Just made it.
Wasn't planning to speak, but I didn't get a letter, so.
Can you raise your right, thank you. Can you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
I'm Scott Hunter, and I live at 6 Windcastle. So I live, I'm one of the, probably the most impacted, my wife and I, from this change. We live at the corner of the fork, where six, where the two roads come together. My neighbors can't get in and out of their homes without going past mine today. We have two children, so what we're concerned about is the additional traffic going by. So we're concerned about having another entrance into Faridale and the expansion into the plat three. So our biggest concern really is the additional traffic. And the construction traffic to go with it. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Kevin McGraw, 100 Summer House Lane at the front of Windcastle. It's obvious, nobody wants 70, 80, 90 more cars using Faridale or Windcastle. We're all against that. So a solution to me is less density, or they get their own entrance by purchasing one of those other properties over by Faridale. So something to consider, something to think about. And when you make a decision, I would ask that you maybe table this until we get consensus about what might be good. Because we're all afraid of the increased traffic and what it's going to do. That's it. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to make one more comment. They mentioned the sewer that shipped over on Faridale, just off of Faridale Lane. It's a small unit in the first place, okay? It had to be expanded. We're already paying like $40, $60 a month for that service in the first place, which I don't mind in a way. I mean, I appreciate that. But, um, I lost my train of thought. I had a brain operation. So anyway, the main, oh, the gate. And the buyout. If they want to come down Faridale, the buyer or the owner, the project wants to buy us out, we're all for it. Because I would like to go back to Kentucky. But anyway, I've been there a long time. And I like this, I like the neighborhood. It's like 12 acres of woods. Actually, it's 40 back there, but it's 12 acres of woods by me. And I have a little garden and stuff like that. I like my privacy. But like I said, if you want to buy us out, have at it.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Michael Entravia. I live at 45 Windcastle. And I first want to say that I couldn't be the only person that got up here, didn't get up here and talk tonight, so I had to get up and say something. But to show support for our subdivision. But I would like to start off by saying that, you know, we appreciate everything you guys are doing. And, and I don't think there's anybody in our subdivision that doesn't want to see continued development in St. Charles County. I've been out here for, well, going on 40 years. And so I want to see St. Charles County continue to develop. But, you know, I know it's your job, and I know you guys are all paying close attention to just how things develop. I have just one comment. My biggest concern, besides supporting our, my fellow residents, my big concern is the traffic part of it. I think, you know, Windcastle was designed, and it was the appeal to me, to be this kind of quaint little place that you could go walk the streets, and it was quiet, and there's not a lot of traffic. And, and I think the way the infrastructure was designed, and you may or may not realize it, but basically, there's one street that feeds a subdivision. So if we have 37 more properties with two to three cars at each house, traveling two to three times a day through the subdivision, I live right on that street, along with many of my other residents. And we're going to see an increase, I calculate roughly, of at least 200 more cars a day driving down our street. And that's in addition to what we already have. And I just don't think our subdivision was designed to handle that. It was designed to handle the original plat three, but that was going to be with one acre lots, with maybe half of those cars traveling that roadway. But I think, I think this is just overload. I think the glass is, is running over. And my biggest concern is the traffic. And I, and I hope you'll, you know, bear that in mind. And you might even want to come down, stand on the street, and just see and try to imagine 300 or more cars driving up and down that street. And all the issues that, you know, that come from that. So anyway, I appreciate your, appreciate your attention to this, and hope you'll bear that in mind. Thank you.
Anybody else?
May I make another comment?
I can give you about 30 seconds.
Just real quick, we went so far as to-
Why don't you go ahead and come up, yeah, so we get to, on the mic.
We went so far as to limit our trash hauler to one trash hauler in the subdivision. We narrowed it down to one. And we only have a trash truck in there two days a week, recyclables and trash on one day, yard waste on another. We did that. Plat two complies with that also. And the question would be, would, would the proposed plat three abide by that or not? Just to keep the traffic down in the subdivision. And also, there are still six unsold lots of plat two that Sue Schaefer still owns. There are several that aren't built on yet. So many of the residents are questioning, why open up another plat when we haven't completed or close to completed the second plat? And the lots are probably the same price. Homes are going to be the same price as what's going to be open in plat three or higher. So that's a big question a lot of homeowners had. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We'll go ahead and close the public- All right, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing. Yeah, if the applicant wants to come up forward and address some of the questions.
Do I need to?
No, you've already been sworn in.
All right. All right, well, we've heard from a lot of people here with grave concerns about this development, and we certainly would like to cut some of those off tonight and answer some of your questions that you have. I'm not sure I have all the answers to your questions, but we're going to try to answer as many as I possibly can. So, the developer, I know it's a developer out of Florida that has spent a lot of time building all along the East Coast, from, I guess, Florida all the way to New York. This developer, I have not worked with in St. Louis to get an actual development. We have rezoned and got a preliminary plan approved on another piece of property in O'Fallon. But that is since set. We haven't pushed forward with that piece yet. But he is new into town with a lot of experience building very, very, very nice homes throughout the East Coast, New York area. I've not been told by any of the, by my contact, David Fry, about who the builder is going to be, or if they've even started marketing this to a home builder or a custom home builder. The covenants that were going to, that had been agreed to was worked out with Sue Schaefer and David Fry, which is a contract purchaser. And it was agreed upon. I can't tell you the exact decisions that were made, because that wasn't brought forth to me, but I was told that we were following the covenants and restrictions of Wind Castle as of today. Access is going to be through Wind Castle. It's our public access that we have out there today. The streets are built to St. Charles County standards, which should be able to uphold the additional traffic and the additional construction traffic. They've been experiencing the same construction traffic that we're going to experience, building our homes on our side of the property as well. It was mentioned there are unsold lots, so obviously, they see some construction traffic through there. We would like to, obviously, we wouldn't be traveling down every street, but we have to gain access into this site. Faraday Lane would not, would not, it wasn't built, most likely, to county standards. Faraday Lane would not be able to handle the kind of construction traffic. Encroachments, we don't plan on encroaching on anybody's property in plat two. Water runoff, we will follow all the guidelines of St. Charles County storm water control. We are providing detention basins for the site, and we'll be providing all that information to them. We do not expect to have an increase in runoff above and beyond what St. Charles County would allow us to do. The detention area that was mentioned, we are, our intentions are to add on to that detention basin and make it bigger. We will be providing detention. We will be getting a land disturbance permit from DNR, and we'll be getting our permits from the county as needed. The outlot is purchased with this tract. It is already zoned, R1B. There is another outlot that will be our access point with no street on it at this time. That is zoned R1B. So we're not asking for those two tracts to be rezoned back to R1B. They're already R1B. Custom homes, as I mentioned, I don't know who the builder is. You asked me the question of how much do I think the houses are worth in Wind Castle? All I can say is we're going to try to model that development. We don't certainly want to bring any prices down or home values down for anybody in the area, and that's our goal. Sanitary sewers, we have had discussions with Duckett Creek already. We will not be utilizing Wind Castle sewer system. We're going to be using a lift station. We'll have gravity sewers to a lift station, and we're going to lift those sewers to a Duckett Creek sanitary sewer system that is gravity. And that will be done through Wyndham Place. That won't be done through Wind Castle. Security cameras, that's a private matter that the subdivision decided to take upon themselves. If they would like to put a security camera up on our end of the development and work that out with the association, I'm sure the two associations can come to an agreement with that. Trash hauling, in the same effect. We did the same thing in the subdivision I live at. Just tried to reduce the amount of large truck traffic. So that issue can be worked out between the two homeowners' associations. Safety of the access, obviously, we'll have to follow all guidelines of the police department and sheriff's department for speed and so forth. We are planning on doing a gate. There was talks about stacking of cars at the gate. Our gate will be inside the outlot that's shown on that plan. We're not going to have it right at the intersection of Wind Castle plat two. It will be in our subdivision slightly to allow some stacking of those cars as well. Lot sizes, that was mentioned. You know, our average lot size is over 28,000 square feet. So we certainly meet and exceed the 20,000 square foot R2 zoning lot sizes. And we don't anticipate any one and a half acre lots. I'm not sure where that came from, but the intent here was to do, continue the development as R1B, per the owner of the property. Yes, sir?
Mr. Banks, looking at this lot one, or plat one was a PUD, and plat was an R1B. You're correct about that. But the smallest lot on that plat two, there's four lots I'm looking at here that are smaller than anything that was in the second development. You've got lots 13, 14, and 15, and I don't understand how somebody would want to build an $800,000 house on a 20,000 square foot lot.
I'm not sure what you're looking at or referring to, sir? But I have not submitted a preliminary plan?
This bluff here, in plat two, they put 30 lots on 40 acres.
Okay.
And here, you've got 37 lots on 35 acres.
Yes, sir.
So the math on that is, why did you come in and ask for the R1B? Because you wanted to build all the lots you could on this property. And my concern is that I think some of these lots are really squeezed. Like I said, on my plat here, 12, 13, 14, they're 21,000 square foot lots. Did you have to get 37 lots out of here? Could you have made the lots a little bigger?
Well, I'm sure that could be an option. I'm going to refer to one of the owner's representatives here.
Can you raise your hand? Thank you.
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Rich Francis. I'm for Matterhorn Court, O'Fallon, Missouri. I do represent the development company that's doing the project. And as Dale mentioned, I kind of made some notes myself on the comments that were made. I'll get back to yours in just a minute. But I wanted to run through some of the other ones first. The trash haulers that was mentioned, we certainly would want to work with Wind Castle to limit, do we use the same trash hauling company? I mean, that's to our advantage as well as theirs, so that's certainly something we would want to do. The citizen meeting that was mentioned, as you all well know, this is a rezoning. This is not a preliminary plan review. Once we have favorable zoning, then we would be happy to sit down and have a citizen meeting and go over the plat, once it's finalized and submitted, and get their input and talk to them. It's certainly something that this developer would do. He's done in other communities. He wants some input from the residents. But tonight, as you all know, this is just a rezoning application, all it is. We're just trying to rezone the ground to the same zoning that's next door. The entrance that was mentioned with the, they have a beautiful entrance to Wind Castle with the security cameras. And this developer also would be more than willing to chip in and help pay to maintain that due his pro rata share of upkeep for the maintenance, landscaping, or whatever it takes to keep their monument as beautiful as it is today. The sanitary sewers, as Dale mentioned, they do have a low-pressure grinder system, and we knew, excuse me, we know we cannot tie into that. We've had several discussions with Duckett Creek. So we will have to submit plans to have our own tie-in to a gravity system and not use theirs. The runoff, there will be two basins, probably, one on the low end, and we're going to utilize the existing one they have now. The outlot on the top, lot A up there on top, I think it is, that would be expanded, and the lake will be enlarged for more detention. And again, as part of the assessment for this subdivision, they would also chip in and pay to help maintain that ground, keep it up to par. If there's any problems with it, then their assessments also would be used to fix those problems. So, again, the developer's not wanting to just escape by. He wants to be part of the community. The trees is part of the...
Rich, I'm going to disagree with that. We have two, we have one developer, and we have two HOAs right now, and we can't even agree on maintenance of that pond right now. So you saying that you're going to pitch in...
Well, I can't address that the two can't get along today. All I can say is we're coming to say we'll get along, I guess, with whatever, however they get along. I mean, we're willing to work.
And I guess the other thing is Dale's already kind of talked about this. If you could answer Ron's question...
Your question was...
You're right, what you said first. This is a zoning meeting.
Correct.
But when you come back with the plat, I would have some serious reservations on the size of some of these lots.
I stand that.
I said the other one, when we say this is just like, I want this zoning because it's the same thing as next to me, the R2. But we come back, they put 30 lots on 40 acres, and these are 37 lots on, smaller than that. So we can discuss that on your next time back.
Well, and I'll address it now.
I would, Ditto, I was going to say it before, Ron, same issues. But also, something you just said, which I disagree with. We've been on, all of us here, we've had different meetings for different issues. I think you said it's only a planning and zoning issue. Wrong. I think you put the cart before the horse. The people that have come before us, whether it's a cell tower, whether it's a subdivision, get together with the people that you're going to impact them, because that's really why all these people are here. Had you gotten together with them and just met, this is what our plans. What do you think, folks? Where do we need to modify? You wouldn't have all these people here. What you want to do is have this approved, and these people are not going to be happy. You can hear all their reservations. It's not going to be resolved tonight, the way it's set. I also agree with Ron, I think, and a lot of these people, I think some of the lots are squeezed, to paraphrase his word. I think you should have alternative B, maybe putting different, larger lot sizes. And I think you would make a lot of other people happier here. And with the amount of money that you're selling these homes for, I think you're still going to be very profitable.
Well, I guess that if I said it, I didn't want to meet with the residents. I didn't mean to say that.
No, I just think you would have been a lot better off meeting them before this meeting.
Well, again, I was just trying to say that we were just following, I guess, the protocol, how we thought it had to be. You submit for rezoning first, then you submit for a preliminary plan. And that was the goal. Obviously, we wanted to hear some of the comments, and then we need to go back and develop a plan and submit that. We have not submitted a plan yet. So, the lot sizes, the, when Wind Castle was built, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, whatever it was, 18 years ago, from talking with Sue when she put the property up for sale, as it mentioned, there are still lots in there that she can't sell. And that's an issue for her. Times have changed. People today necessarily doesn't, if you look at the subdivisions that are being built, it's not so much that they want a great big lot for a big house. I mean, you can go all over this county, and I challenge you to do it. You'll see anywhere from a half million to $800,000 home on a lot that's half acre. It happens all over this county. Or 20,000, or 15,000. The lot size does not dictate the price of the house like it used to. People don't want the big expensive yards. There are some that do, surely, but if the product for that size lot was so valuable...
We can discuss that when you come back.
Sure.
It has an effect on your neighbor, even if it's not your house. It's our duty here as this board, it's what do we want the county to look like in 10 or 15? Some of it's been on us for 10 years, and the problems that he says. You know, where they're going to put a clock tower right next to me, or, excuse me...
Pick Farm next to you, the...
Yeah, you know...
It's not in my backyard.
Tear this up, and that's what we're doing.
One of the other issues, I think, you could have come prepared, is this unknown builder, this Highway P Investments, all the way up and down the coast. I think you should have some pictures of his developments. From Florida to New York, South Carolina, Georgia, as you characterize these down the whole East Coast. We haven't seen one picture of one of his houses. Are they all custom, or are they individual subdivisions?
Let me address that. The builder, this is a developer. This individual will not build these homes here. There's already been discussions with home builders, such as Fisher, who has built some of the homes already in Wind Castle. So he's going to, with the price point of these lots, he's going to be looking for the high-end custom-type home builder. Fisher's one of them. There are several other ones in the county. So I've already, contact has been made with the company that built homes already in the Wind Castle subdivision. So this gentleman is a developer. He's going to develop this property, and then he will seek a builder that will build a home similar to what Wind Castle is, because that's the restrictions that Sue has negotiated with him, that the home has to be built to that standard.
I have nothing else, except that Ditto and his comments, it'd be wise that you meet with these people before you come back with a hard plat.
And I said I wouldn't be doing that.
Okay.
I don't know if it was, looking through my list, I don't know if there were other items that didn't hit. Trees, I think, was one of them, and working with Sue. Again, there was an agreement in the contract that a certain distance of trees had to remain on the lot lines, that we can't clear all the trees. In addition, the county has a tree ordinance, so we can't clear all the trees as well. So there's a limitation of what trees can be cleared out. So there's still remain a tree buffer all along the back of the property line. And if there was another one I missed, let me know what that was about.
Any other, any other questions for the applicant? We've closed the public portion of this.
I make a motion that we reopen the public comments section, because different issues have been brought up by this owner, I don't know if he's owner of the property or developer's representative.
The member of the county...
You're called missionary to make the motion.
I make a motion we reopen the public comment for three or four comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the public portion is reopened.
Thank you so much.
Sure is. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes, my name is Lorna Fromm, and I live at 26 Wind Castle. There's one chance at rezoning. Once this property's rezoned to 20,000 square foot lots, anybody who comes forward with a plat that has 20,000 square foot lots and subscribes to all the resident requirements for the rezoning, you almost have to give them the rezoning. If you don't, they can sue you for it. The issue I have is, I don't, I guess I don't understand development. Because if I'm a builder, and I want to build a certain type of home, why isn't the builder involved with the lot sizes? If I want to build million five, 1 million, 1.5 million dollar homes, I'm going to pass over on this development. Because somebody, this developer's already decided how big these lots are going to be. Why isn't the builder here first? We're like, this developer's going around making all these plans. We don't know who the builder is. The builder, wouldn't the builder want, if you want to build a certain type of house, why don't we know who this builder is? They have one shot to get this, and if the lots are, the developer's deciding how that's going to be set forth, so they can get money from this builder. But a lot of builders might not like the configuration of this. So it doesn't make any sense, and the secrecy is very alarming to me. And I don't know, I've not seen any restrictions for plat three. The developer's representative says these restrictions are similar to Wind Castle. They're Wind Castle-like. I haven't seen them. I don't know, but they even exist yet. So my concern is, we've got one chance at rezoning. If these go down to 20,000 square foot lots, and some builder who's yet to be named comes forward with a plat with houses to be built on at least 20,000 square feet, then you're going to be hard-pressed not to approve that. Thank you.
Sorry, I came up again.
You swore under oath that you wouldn't be back up.
I know I did. Can I change my mind? I'm a woman. Just to correct something, the retention pond is, that is currently there, is owned by plat one. It was deeded to plat one when we assumed the HOA. So any adding into the pond would have to be approved by plat one, and nobody has spoken to us about that. Also, which covenants will they be following? Plat one or plat two? They are different. And several people in plat two don't even have copies of them. But they are different. I've seen them. But they are different, I've seen them. So we would need to know which ones they would be following. And the roads on the preliminary plat are 10-foot narrower than what is in currently in Windcastle. So, you know, there's a big difference there. And it's not a continuation, it's a different place. Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do. I'm Matt Canoyer. I currently live at 1025 Wind, we're passing St. Charles. I own lot 74 in Windcastle on Castle Bluff Drive. Couple of brief points. The 10-feet narrower lot only really becomes an issue when you talk about the covenants that really haven't been agreed to by any of these parties. So there's a lot of very, it's very murky as to what has been agreed to and what hasn't, and none of us know what that is. As somebody who's trying to develop and hopefully construct a house in this area, it's very difficult to comply with a side entry garage on a lot that's a lot, that's 80-feet wide. So the current covenants don't allow front entry garages at all, and they haven't really been approved in that neighborhood. So if you use those same covenants back there on an 80-foot wide lot, it's gonna be very difficult to get that job done, especially at that price point. And I can assure you, somebody who's going through this process now, that if you really want to put a house that's gonna be 800 to a million on that, on that size lot, and that's close together, it's gonna be a tough sell for anyone. It's a tough sell in plat 2 right now for a lot of folks, and it's a lot more desirable of a location as it sits now. The other thing I would beg you guys to consider, is that as a St. Charles guy, who grew up here and hopefully plan to be here for the rest of my life, we need to have some availability for folks who wanna build those kinda houses to be able to do so. That ground is top-notch ground, overlooks the Missouri bottoms, it's beautiful. And you do wanna leave that available for people to build those kinda places. If you want tract homes, or you want more of a subdivision feel, that more is a B kinda zoning area, you can do that. And there's a lot of areas to do that in. But if you wanna do a custom home, that's somewhere that you're gonna anchor and stay there for 25 years, 30 years, 40 years, there's not that many availability spots for you to do that here in St. Charles County anymore. And I know because I've looked. So keep that in mind as you go forward. I got a lot of professional friends who move out of St. Charles County because they can't find the home that they're looking for. That ground and those opportunities are fast going. Thank you for considering.
I just have one very quick comment of, and I agree, this is basically as clear as mud to me, with the description, with all due respect. But I've talked to builders, and I'm talking about custom builders in St. Charles, and I've actually talked about this property. And the reason that you're looking at this kinda rezoning is, is becoming more obvious to me. The price point for a custom builder out here is very, very different, and way too high in that, with that piece of land. So I would just ask you to keep that in mind as well. The custom builders, they're not gonna go there. Fisher, I, he's a custom builder, I would agree. The price point for him to get in there, I think is gonna be enormous. So just consider that as well.
Just one other comment as it relates to lot sizes in plat 2. There are a number of sites that Sue has not been able to sell, however, and there are people here that can probably help me. I know there's at least two, if not three families, that have actually purchased side-by-side lots and consolidated to build their homes. So the idea that these large sites are not desired, and people wanna cram a huge house on a small site, I don't think is an accurate statement.
One point I, I just wanted to make, they talk about the covenants and restrictions of Windcastle, and, and I don't have the exact numbers, but if you would see them, you would be surprised at how small the house sizes are. I, I think it's 1,800 square foot for a ranch, and 2,400 square foot for a two-story, something like that. It's surprisingly small, but nobody was terribly concerned about that when Sue and her father Bud controlled the property, because they saw what they were doing with the property. And even if it was a 2,000 square foot house, it was a very nice 2,000 square foot house. So that doesn't, what, the point I'm making is that doesn't afford us a lot of protection that they're going to follow the restrictions and covenants of plat 1 and plat 2. That's all.
Actually, just as a point, the covenants of Windcastle 1, and I don't know about 2, the square footage requirement is much greater than 1,800. It's about 2,500 square feet for a ranch and stuff, somewhere in that range.
Just for the record on that, I have a, for plat 2 covenant, it's 2,500 square feet, I'm sorry, it's 2,500 square feet for a ranch minimum, and it's 3,200 square feet for a store and a half or two, is today's plat 2, current Windcastle.
Anybody else? All right. Let the applicant come up and.
The couple of questions, I guess, came up, the pond. I, I would have to refer back to Sue. She's the one that told us that she controlled that, and if she doesn't. If it's locked, if it is plat 1, then we'll, we'll have to work with plat 1. I mean, we'll work with whoever owns the property. We're not trying to shove anything down anybody's throat, so if Sue doesn't control that lot, then we work with plat 1. The roads. The roads, our width will match their width. I, I don't know why they thought our roads were gonna be skinny than their roads, that's not the case. Our lots, as was mentioned, are 80-feet, that's incorrect also. Our lots are 100-foot wide minimum. Some of them are larger than that, so they're bigger than what they thought as well. So all I can say is, again, this is a rezoning, and I know that worries some people, we're asking for the same zoning that's next door. We're asking you to consider staff recommended approval, and, and we're giving you our word that we will meet with the residents, when we have the plan finalized, incorporate all the comments we've heard today, and have a meeting with them and go over with them. Can I guarantee that we're gonna address all their comments? Obviously not, but we know what a lot of their concerns are, and if there's things we can do, we will do that.
All right, I'll bring it back for the, for the commission comments.
Can I have advice of counsel here? The, Mrs. Fromm said something about, you know, if we prove the R2 zoning, and we don't like the plat, we make some restriction on that. She inferred that we could just be sued, would we have the short side of that argument?
Well, it's a little more complicated than that, but it, once you've got the zoning in place, if they meet the planning requirements for that, for whatever the lot sizes are, what the zoning district is, then it becomes more a matter of rote. And so if they meet, you know, that is the numbers, and if they meet the county's numbers for the planning process, then that would be approved. So, yeah, technically, that's, that's true. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What's, what's the timing on this? If, if we, if we tabled this tonight, give you a little more opportunity to have some meetings with these people, to discuss this further, is, is that a problem for you, or is?
Well, it pushes obviously everything back 30 days, which, yeah, is, is a problem.
Mr. Chair, I move to table rezoning request 15-00001.
I'll second this. Mr. Griffin?
Second.
How do you vote? Yeah, how do you vote?
To table.
To table.
Correct.
Yes, is it a yes?
Yes.
To table. Sorry. Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
I have to abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
The application, RZ15-00001 is tabled. I vote 10 to 1, 8 to 1, excuse me. 8, 1, 8, 0, 1 abstain. The, the next application on the agenda this evening is application RZ15-000002. I'll talk to you later.
It is from six acre lots out there, residential.
My family also, I think our responsibility is to decide what to go back.
I have no idea. No idea. All right.
Application RZ15-00002. The applicant, Kenneth W. Hanner, property owner, Kenneth W. Hanner. The application requests zoning change from A agricultural district, 5-acre minimum lot size, to RR, single-family residential district, 3-acre minimum lot size. The property is located on the east side of Isambeth Road, approximately 550 feet south of Dean Lane. The property is approximately 13.53 acres and is located within Council District 1. Staff?
Thank you. Okay, the subject site is zone agricultural, and as you can see, all the adjacent properties are also zoned A agricultural. The master plan shows the area to be developed with rural residential, which is a 3-acre density. Area land uses include vacant agricultural and single-family residences to the north, south, and west, and to the east is vacant agricultural. I mean, reviewing the application from A to RR, Steph finds the proposed zoning is appropriate along Isambeth Road. The proposed zoning meets the minimum lot size of the rural residential master plan category at 3 acres. We do have a little problem, the, the county subdivision ordinance only allows you to split off two parcels less than 10 acres in size, since we enacted the Unified Development Ordinance in 1999. And there are more, there's been more than that, so they will have to plat this as a subdivision plat, but that shouldn't be an issue. We will, we will still allow, well, we don't have a plat yet, but I'm guessing we will allow access to Isambeth Road. When, the whole time we were out there, there wasn't a vehicle that drove by, so we don't see a traffic issue there. Steph is recommending approval of the zoning change, and because we find that it meets the current and future land use patterns in the area. There, there is a petition submitted with six signatures in favor.
Oh, happy day. Any, any questions of staff?
Yeah. The drawing that we have with the division of the lots, I see on the, right now, it's private well and individual sewage disposal, septic.
Yeah, there are no utilities in the area.
I'm sorry?
There are no utilities in the area.
Not in there. So are these lots 5 acres or not? They're not? So how is that?
They're, they're just proposing the additional 3.915. The, the other, the other parcels in the area were, were approved, or not approved, they were subdivided, I shouldn't even say, they were parceled off, let me use that term, prior to 2006, when we raised the minimum lot size from 3 acres to 5 acres.
So septic?
You can have septic in a well on 3 acre piece.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanna know. Thank you.
Sorry. Long way to get there.
Windy path to that answer. Any other questions of staff? All right. Is the applicant in the room? Yeah. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Kenneth W. Hanner. I live on Isambeth Road, 2142, O'Fawn, Missouri.
Go ahead.
I own the property there, and I was wanting to give 3.9 acres to my son to build on. And it's right next to my brown laws, up on Monarchian, and they were telling me that I would have to put a subdivision entrance in because of the other two tracks that my father gave away to my brother and my sister. But there's utility power lines going through the property that, that you can't build on, it's just to be that 4 acres. There was the rest of it there is where the utility line.
It's, it is the lot, the parcel that you're proposing to split off, and the parcel to the north that's already created. Those are the two that have to be part of the subdivision plat.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to divide the lower 11 acres, I think, one of those lots.
I got this letter where saying I'd have to divide.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, that was from me, I must have made a claim. But we'll, we'll work with you on, on how to get through the system.
Okay.
You'll wanna call a good engineer land surveyor, for starters, but we'll get you there.
So that's, you know, but that's what I'm wanting to do, is just give him some ground to build on, there.
Any questions for the applicant? Could I be your son?
Well, my, my father gave me the upper part, and I just, you know, in the home place, there's.
All right, thank you. That's true, yeah. Big party.
That's another problem.
All right, we'll now open us up to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this application, they may come forward and do so. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of it, bring it back for the commission. Comments, suggestions, motions?
Pass?
Sign.
All right, Mr. Ellis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
All right, the motion is approved. 9 to 0. All right. The next.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
The next, uh, next application, conditionally used permit, CUP 15-00001. Christopher Heffner, owner, H&amp;K Services LLC, owner. Applicant requests zoning, conditionally used permit for a lawn care service. Property is zoned A agricultural district, 5-acre minimum lot size. Property is located on the east side of Highway Z at County Point Court, Country Point Court, excuse me. The property is approximately 24.95. The property is approximately twenty-four point nine five acres and is located within Council District Two. Steph?
Okay, thank you. The adjacent properties are all zoned A agricultural and the adjacent land uses are all single family residential. I'll let the property owner explain what they want to do, sorry. Okay, in evaluating all conditional use permits, Steph looks at them relative to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the county. We find that a lawn care service located along Highway Z is appropriate. We have approved other lawn care services on the county arterial roads in the agricultural district. So Steph is recommending approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, a site plan must be submitted to and approved by the St. Charles County Community Development Department indicating the entrance, parking, and location of all structures. Stormwater treatment for any future development on the site shall be required for the purpose of collecting, storing, infiltrating, and filtering stormwater runoff from ninety percent of the recorded daily rainfall events equivalent to one point one four inches of rainfall, especially from rooftop streets, driveways, parking and vehicle storage areas, and areas where chemical fertilizers are applied before the runoff is discharged from the property or into a water course. Three, no conditional use shall be active until all conditions of the approval have been met. Four, in any case where a conditional use is not in place and inactive use within two years from the date of granting and/or in accordance with the terms of the conditional use originally granted or subsequently amended, then without further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the County Council, the conditional use or authorization thereof shall be null and void. We had one letter from MODAT. Any questions of staff? Thanks.
Is the applicant here? Come on. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Chris Heffner, Levin Robeson Court, Winsfield, Missouri. Actually, that application does not have my business partner's name on it. Rhonda helped me fill it out that day, but this is Craig Keogh, my business partner.
All right.
We basically, uh, we both have full-time jobs, I'm a firefighter, paramedic. Craig's actually a pipe fitter. We bought this property as an investment to basically own property out there and to run a small, basically, lawn care business. We didn't know we had to do all the zoning stuff and here we are, so. Yes, sir?
Yeah. We've had a lot of different zoning along there, we had, uh, you know, subdivision down here with Calaway Cat, uh, Catal. Are you gonna, is, when you say a lawn care business is going to be commercial, we have a lot of traffic coming in and out, because you, I guess your entrance is going to be pretty much on the other side of that Country Point Court.
Correct.
Across there.
Yes, we own Dotson Lane at this time.
Yeah, and Z gets a lot of traffic.
Correct.
As you probably well know. A lot. What kind of traffic effect are you going to have?
We're a very small business. Right now, we currently own four pickup trucks and a couple, handful of trailers. We're just kind of growing as we are here. We're not looking to get much bigger than we really are now. Again, we both have full-time jobs and we started this, you know, like I said, we just, we bought this as an investment, so not a lot of traffic in and out on Z.
So you can store equipment there and then have employees come?
Correct.
In the morning?
Correct.
Pick your trucks up and go out and do their thing and drop them off again?
Yeah, and then they asked about parking. As a truck pulls out of the shop or out of the garage, the employee will basically just park inside. That alleviates any outside storage. The reason we built the building was to keep all the equipment inside, we don't want anything outside. Again, it was a, uh, a summer camp before, so it's got a built-in pool on it, so a lot of times when we're out there, Craig and I are out there working, the kids are playing in the pool, and basically we try and keep everything park-like setting. We do have an agreement in place with the neighbor next door to us. He bought the, the house, a very nice home, from the original owner that owned forty-six acres, and he had split that a number of years ago. Half of it being the, the summer camp and the other half being his residence. We've been in contact with him, let him know what we're doing, let him know that this was not going to be, you know.
Just the one with the lake?
Well, yes, yes, yeah. Ron and Sheila Smith, so they've also, we could pretty much talk to them and let them know what's going on too.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
We will now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this application, please feel free to come forward and do so. Seeing none, we will close the public portion of the, uh, this application and bring it back before the commission.
I will make a motion to vote?
Yes. To vote? Is that a motion to approve then?
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Hammond, seconds. Mr. Hammond, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Prom?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Nine to nothing. All right. The next series of applications are temporary fireworks stands. It's our March tradition here at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am going to, uh, I will group the applications by, by applicant, so we got a couple of, several singles in front. First application, FWK fifteen dash zero 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 one by Bad Boys Fireworks LLC applicant Jay Davison representative. The property is zoned C two general commercial district. The property known as thirty-one twenty West Clay Street is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of West Clay and Gulfway Street. Property is located within Council District Six. Steph, any comments?
And we had no complaints on the site this last year. The applicant was not going to be able to attend there from out of town, so.
Okay. We will open this up to the public. Anybody? All right, closing the public for the commission. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Griffin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Prom?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yep. Yes.
Next application, FWK fifteen, one, one five dash zero 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 two by Marty Fierce applicant. The property is located C two general commercial district. The property is known as twenty-eight ninety-six Highway K and is located on the east side of Highway K approximately four hundred feet south of Fallon Parkway. Property is located within Council District Three. Steph, comments?
Um, no. And this person's also out of town, so.
Spring break? All right, opening to the.
No, no, he lives out of town.
Maybe he's on spring break?
Yeah.
Opening it up to the public, anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this one? Seeing none, closing it back before the commission, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Prom?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
Approved eight to one. Next application, FWK fifteen, uh, one five dash zero 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 three by Wesley Godar applicant. The property is zoned I one light industrial district. The property known as seven sixty-six Paradise Lane is located on the north side of West Terra Lane, approximately one hundred feet west of Gentleman Road. The property is located within Council District One. Steph, comments?
No comments on this one.
All right. Is the applicant in the room? Want to come on forward? One? Hello? Can you raise your red hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yep.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
It's Wes Godar, number two, Godar Court, O'Fallon, Missouri.
All right, go ahead. Any?
Same old, same old.
Same old, same old?
Yep.
Any complaints, issues last year? Nothing?
No.
Sweet. Any questions? Thanks for coming out.
All right, thank you.
All right, open it up to the public, does anybody wishes to speak on this application? Seeing none, we'll close it, bring it back for the commission.
Motion to approve? Second.
Mr. Griffin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Prom?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks for coming out. Sorry you had to wait so long.
Hope you enjoyed the show. All right, the, uh, the next series of, um, applications are, uh, all Merrimack Specialty Company. I will read them all into the record and we'll discuss them as, as one. Application, here it goes. Application, FW, FWK fifteen, uh, one five dash zero 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 four by Merrimack Specialty Company applicant Thomas Dixon representative. The property is C two general commercial district. The property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Highway N and Highway Z. The property is located within Council District Two. Application FWK one five dash zero 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 five by Merrimack Specialty Company applicant Thomas Dixon representative. The property, this property is located on zoned C two slash FF slash FW general commercial district with floodway fringe and floodway overlay district. The property known as sixty-five thirty Highway N is located on the south side of Highway N at Spring Orchard Drive. The property is located within Council District Three. Application FWK one five dash zero 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 six by Merrimack Specialty Company applicant Thomas Dixon representative. The property is zoned C two general commercial district. The property is known as twenty-three zero one Upper Bottom Road is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Upper Bottom Road and Missouri Route three sixty-four. The property is located within, in Council District Seven. Application FWK one five dash zero 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 seven by Merrimack Specialty Company applicant Thomas Dixon representative. The property is zoned I two heavy, heavy industrial district. The property is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Didon, Didion Drive and Mid Rivers Mall Drive. The property is located within Council District Six. Application FWK one five dash zero 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 eight by Merrimack Specialty Company applicant Thomas Dixon representative. The property is zoned I one light industrial district. The property is known as one two five zero Mexico Road and is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Highway A and Mexico Road. The property is located in Council District One. Steph?
Okay, on the fireworks application number eight, we did do a report, this is a new location for us at the corner of Mexico and Highway A. There is currently a, um, auto parts or tire store located on the property. They're proposing to put the fireworks stand to the east. I'm, I'm sorry, the west of the building. And they'll utilize existing parking lot. The entrance to the site is off of Mexico Road. They have no access to Highway A, there's a fence along Highway A, so that's probably a good thing that all the traffic will be put onto Mexico Road. I mean, it's in a completely, in, well, we consider it a completely industrial area. There's a large parcel to the north of it between this property and the residential zoning. We're really close to the GM plant. So Steph finds an appropriate spot for a fireworks stand. Any questions of staff?
Yeah. Any questions, staff?
Oh, and on all of the fireworks stands, I'm sorry, I forgot to say this, we recommend approval subject to the twenty fifteen fireworks regulations.
All right, any questions for staff? Thanks. Is the applicant here? Come on up. Can you raise your red hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes, Tom Dixon, P.O. Box three oh five, Arnold, Missouri, six three oh one oh. We have five applications that are presented before you this evening. The first four are existing locations that we've operated for a number of years. They'll be operated in the same manner that they've been operated in the past. Application zero eight is a new location as described by Jan and, um, it's on, at, at, at the corner of A and, and Mexico Road and, um, we really consider that sort of an interstate location because A kind of cuts through from seventy to sixty-one and that's how we'll advertise it. It's in an industrial area and adjacent to a lot of unincorporated county. If anybody has any questions about, um, our company, our industry, any of those locations, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will now open this up to the, uh, the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this application, please feel free to do so. Seeing none, we will close the, uh, public portion of it and bring it back for the commission.
Motion to approve?
All of them?
All of them.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ellis, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Abstain.
Mr. Prom?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
All right. Applications are approved. The next application is a preliminary plat. Application PRE one five dash zero 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 one. The, uh, Engineers Backs Engineering Company, the owner slash developer Rodney S. and Patricia S. Jones, owner slash developer. The property is located on the southeast is, is located on the southeast corner of Highway T and Forestale Road. Approximately six lots and is located within Council District Two. Steph?
Actually, we let the engineering company have first crack.
Oh, first crack, all right. Uh, you've been sworn in, so.
Oh, okay. Again, my name is Dale Backs, I'm with Backs Engineering. I'm here tonight representing Rodney Jones on a subdivision called Forestale Ridge. I'm submitting a preliminary plat. Forty-three acre lot subdivision. It is on the southeast corner of Highway T and Forestale Road. It was subdivided off of a larger tract, but we're going to then again subdivided to six lots in the subdivision. Average lot being six point eight five acres. We are surrounded by agricultural zoning. We have an existing private road built to county standards that's sitting out there today with one home under construction on lot number two. That home is, is being built by Rodney Jones, the land purchaser. Smallest lot is six point oh eight, largest lot is nine point four. Of course, that's Rodney's lot. Hundred foot wide at the bill, or a hundred foot building line on Highway T was recommended to us by the county and we've certainly opposed, upheld to that. We've got that shown on our plan. Fifty foot front, forty foot sides and fifty foot rear, minimum lot width is a hundred and fifty feet. We have one lot that's about a hundred and sixty feet, it's in a cul-de-sac, but the lot is very large. All lots will be served by septic system and private wells to serve for water. We've addressed all county comments and construction plans and plat will be followed, follow this up for approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have for me this evening.
Any questions? All right. All right, thank you.
That was easy.
We'll now open this up to the, uh, the public, if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this, feel free to come forward and do so. Seeing none, we will bring it back before the, uh.
Steph recommends approval.
Thank you.
Corrections have been made.
Any other, uh, comments? Suggestions?
Second.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Prom, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Approved nine to zero. Here we go. All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from last month. Everybody had a copy mailed to them. Any questions, comments, changes? Please God, no? All right. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other business for the, uh, for the commission before we adjourn? All right. I will entertain a moment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Oh, not yet. But wait, there's more. All in favor?
Aye.
See you next month.
Good job.